All right. Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission Meeting for Tuesday, July twenty ninth. Like to call the meeting to order and our county clerk will provide a roll call.
Commissioner Quinn.
President.
Commissioner Noel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. We have Mr. Cormod here to provide our invocation. If you please stand and then follow that with a bunch of legions.
This past week, my wife and I went to Branson, Missouri, and while we were there, we attended Sight and Sound's presentation of David. Their choice of events in David's life implicitly emphasized the struggle between a spiritual life and a devotion to the Lord God and a political life, being that of a king. Just thinking about that, I wanted to just share with you perhaps one of David's Psalms. It's in Psalm one twenty-one. And we read these words, "I lift up my eyes to the hills. From where does my help come from? My help comes from the Lord who made heaven and earth. He will not let your foot be moved. He who keeps you will not slumber. Behold, he who keeps Israel will neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord is your keeper. The Lord is your shade on your right hand. The sun shall not strike you by day, nor the moon by night. The Lord will keep you from all evil. He will keep your life. The Lord will keep your going out and your coming in from this day forth and forevermore. Join me in prayer now. Father in heaven, thank you that you are our keeper. Thank you that help comes from you. I pray, Father, that your help will be present in the county commissioners as they make decisions in these days about budgets and about bills and all the details of running the county. I just pray, Father, that you will continue to help them balance all of the things of life. So they continue to see that you are the Lord, that you have made heaven and earth, and that you care for us and provide for us. I pray, Father, your wisdom will guide them and direct them so that your name is honored as they function as your servants in this place and this time. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Public comment. Seeing none, uh, approved.
Did they?
Sorry.
Sorry. Maybe they had public comments.
Uh, outside of the agenda items. You're, yeah, I think everyone's for the agenda.
Well, I wouldn't for sure who that was.
Yep. Um, okay. So approval of the agenda before I ask for approval, I have some additions. Um, I have a road and bridge purchase order, um, community corrections, fourth quarter budget adjustments for both adult and juvenile. Um, I have a discussion with the county clerk on Atchison County E-notices, and I'm going to add EMS report for June, um, to our eleven o'clock item with EMS director. So with those additions, I would look for a motion to approve this week's agenda.
So, second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, consent agenda. We have the commission meeting minutes from last week, July twenty-second, and then we have the finance director review.
Morning. Um, we have payroll for Friday's check date, August first, which is one hundred eighty-six thousand eight fifty-six seventy-two, which is about right on par. Um, the expenses for the accounts payable run for tomorrow, Wednesday, July thirtieth, um, is ninety-six thousand five eighty-five thirty-three, and out of that total, credit cards is four hundred and thirty-five dollars and three cents. And there's no negative at the final sense.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Right. Next, we have commissioner comments. Commissioner Campbell.
Well, if I'm correct on this date, there's a mental health town hall in Leavenworth, um, uh, Thursday, I'll be attending that. Uh, and that I s- that I expect to get some good information out of that, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Chernow.
Uh, I did have something. Oh, uh, next week, uh, Atchison County Fair starts, so we want to, uh, promote, uh, their, uh, all the doings and everything that's going on, and the parade will be that Friday night, so make sure you attend and have a good time.
Awesome. Um, last week I attended the Amberwell Town Hall. Um, they reviewed the community needs assessment. Um, it was wonderful. Uh, Jared Abel, the CEO of the hospital, kicked it off, um, basically prefacing, like although Amberwell's the conduit for this, it's for, for all of us. Um, it was a lot of good information, and I look forward to the next phases of implementation, uh, based on what has been, um, found. I will also be attending the meeting for the Guidance Center on Thursday evening, um, in Leavenworth. And then, um, my prayers go out to the families involved in the accident, um, at Brooks Road and Seventy-three Highway this weekend. I know a lot of constituents have been, um, upset at the number of, of wrecks and incidents there. So over the weekend, I reached out to, um, KDOT and my representatives, um, and we had great feedback yesterday. So, um, both the KDOT representative and the local law enforcement liaison are aware of that, and, um, they're, you know, doing the things on their end to come up with findings and communicate back to me, um, because they have a process that they look at statistics and, um, ways to hopefully help with that. So if I hear more, I will update it, but the, the communication has been initiated, and I appreciate their, their assistance with that. And also citizens for, um, for reaching out. So that is all I have. Um, with that, let's knock these additions out. Um, I have the purchase order, um, ha- that has been paid to Tunks Construction in the amount of ninety-nine thousand five hundred and five dollars and twelve cents. Um, this is for the culvert replacements on Ottawa Road. I would look for a motion to approve this.
So move.
Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Thank you. Um, next I have a Kansas Department of Corrections Division of Adult Services Fourth Quarter Budget Adjustment Report. Um, our community corrections director has to, um, make these amendments based on, um, the state reporting, um, within her budget. So for the adults, I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign, um, and also one thing to note is the adult, um, juvenile corrections, uh, sorry, adult corrections board, um, has already met and approved this and signed off on it. Um, so we, um, are just supporting her recommendation. Um, so with that, I would look for a motion to approve this adjustment and allow the chair to sign for four thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So move. Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Passes three to zero. All right. And following that one is the KDOC Division of Juvenile Services Fourth Quarter Budget Adjustment Report. Um, this one is in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-four cents. This has also been ran through the juvenile board, um, and approved. Um, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign this, uh, adjustment.
So move.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. All right. And then the county clerk has asked us to consider, um, the E-notices, um, new.
I can't sure.
Okay, so, um, the clerk has identified ways to, uh, reduce spending and allow constituents, um, to have better uh, communication via E-notices online. Um, so Susan, if you wanted to summarize kind of what you had explained to us and then
Yeah, sure.
I'll call for a vote.
Sure. So basically, it is, um, it's through the printing company, and what it allows us to do is that they will add a little blurb on to the next notices that send out, which for us would be the R and R notices. And, um, it allows property owners to go in and sign up for, to go paperless and for E-notices, and then all of the history will be saved in there for in perpetuity, like if, if next year you'll be able to look at last year's, two years, still last year's, like it's all going to be there. And, um, it obviously saves the county money because it saves on postage. Um, it's very secure. They, they validate that you are who you are through your email. Your, your parcel will have an identification number so that, uh, you, you have to validate that. The, your, your R and R statement will come with this specific number that you then have to enter. So they know that you are who you will say you are. Um, you can always unsigned. Decide you don't want to do it and un-register. Um, what else? Any other questions?
I don't think so. The initial setup, um, is a one-time.
It's a one-time initial setup fee. That's two hundred and fifty dollars. And, um, then after that, it's, there's an annual, I think it's one and a half cent per PDF that uploads so that they're instantly available for people when they register. And, and they'll, they'll always be there so that if somebody decides in two years that they want to register, the ones that we've sent in are still going to be there. Like the historical ones are there.
And your timeline, so if we were to approve this today, your R and R notices could.
With this, this.
This is it.
Printing, it could start immediately with this next. We can also wait and do it with the next, but it just kind of kicks the can down the road, so.
Right.
Um, it's fourteen and a half cents per mailing per registered user. So, so basically, a registered user will cost fifteen and a half cents, and a non-registered user is going to cost one and a half cents every year after you get past the two hundred and fifty dollar initial setup.
And then.
Versus the full postage for everyone. Their, their system automatically pulls out those who get an E-notice versus a mailing notice, so it doesn't, you don't, you don't get both happening, so there's no double charging. Um.
And Susan, do we have a, for, for people to have perspective, do we, do you have an idea what it costs to mail it? What it's going to cost us this year to mail, mail this out?
It's gonna be seventy, like, I should have that broken down in my head, and I don't have that number off the head, but there's, there's the printing, and it's probably a dollar fifteen, a dollar twenty-five or something each.
Okay.
So, um, with the envelope, the postage, the printing, everything, you know.
Okay, so when I call for a motion, then just do you want us to sign down here, or it's just?
Sure, because I should have printed something else up for approval, but yeah, that would be.
Is that fine?
By the bottom of that.
Okay. All right. Do you guys have any other questions about this before I call for a vote? I mean, it sounds wonderful to me, like the ability to.
I think the, the only downside would be if it doesn't work, it's a risk of the two hundred and fifty dollars plus the, you know, the, the uploading.
Right, and that's to clarify to people, that's our fee, two fifty, there's no fee on that.
Correct.
Their, their side of it's all free. You know.
And you don't have to worry about mail, you know, or comes right to your, your inbox, so.
Now, I think what, one thing that I would like to look at, and I have not discussed this with the treasurer who's here, but we offer, they can pay, people can pay online, right? So I'm just wondering if there might, it might be good to add if that's added to the statement, like you can go pay online here. That information.
Which you can still add.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you guys could work that.
Is that on the, like for the tax. Because on the back of the statement, we have, uh, information on the back of the R and R statement. I guess it doesn't matter because they're not paying with R and Rs, but it's, it's on the tax statement that it goes.
So, yeah, okay. All right. Well, thanks for this information. Um, I would look for a motion to um, approve the county clerk's recommendation to move forward with the E-notices online, uh, through the program that she just explained.
So move. Second.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes three to zero. Little bit behind. Um, we have a quick ten-minute executive session this morning. Um, so we need to do that. It will be, uh, non-elected personnel on the subject of open position with HR, commission,
Finance.
and finance director.
Say ten minutes?
Yes.
Former Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at ten seventeen AM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine V one. And that the purpose of the post-session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee, and that the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the commission room of the courthouse basement, and those present will be the three commissioners, uh, HR and finance director.
I'll second. It's been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye. Aye. Passes. Okay, we are back in open session. Um, I have Holly Hackathon on here for consideration of PO for fee appraisal. Uh, I'm not sure. She on B S. Um, I can't see below.
I don't.
On there. Okay, so we'll revisit her. Um, we'll move on to the deed tax statement discussion and past due penalty. Um, we put this on here a few, two weeks ago, um, to discuss.
Oh, there's Holly. Oh, hi.
Okay, I'm gonna backpedal. You're up, Holly. Consideration of PO for fee appraisal.
Okay. So as previously discussed, I reached out to Keller Craig and Associates, um, got the, this is their, our agreement, and then here's the purchase order. Which the.
And what's this for? I mean.
That is for, because if, if, uh, property owner appeals their valuation notice, and if I don't agree to it, um, and no change the value, or if I reduce it or anything, and they still don't like the value, they have the option to take it to small claims, or they have the option to, um, go out and get their own fee appraisal done uh, prior to the small claims. So then we had an individual go ahead and go out and get their own fee appraisal done. Uh, I don't agree with that fee appraisal, so therefore now I have to go out and get one completed.
How much is it?
It's thirty-five hundred. Which my professional fees, I believe, is twenty-five.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I was just gonna validate it, but I thought it was twenty-five hundred. So this is gonna put us over budget in that line item.
In that line item, yes, but my overall would still, I still won't be in the red.
Okay, but so this was one property owner.
Uh-huh.
Um, but.
And that's, and that's what I had indicated before. Um, so if we have numerous property owners do this throughout the year, I may have to go ahead and increase that um, within that budget line and, and coming years.
So this, this is a per, per incident fee? Is that what this is, or is this just a contract that this?
No, this is, this is just for the one appraisal.
Good.
Because I reached out to other counties too, and they said if you have individuals that have like, you know, big industrials, um, businesses, then you better have at least thirty-five to forty thousand dollars in your budget for your professional fees, because that one appraisal will cost like thirty-five thousand.
Yeah. Is there any, when we come to that, if, if it goes your way, and how, how does that work?
No, there is not. Because if they, if they are called to, to testify, then they charge a three hundred dollars an hour.
Wow, okay.
So. And that's.
This is.
Great standard.
Yeah. This is something that we also can't predict.
Right.
I mean, this is the first one I think that I've seen, but it could happen with others. Um, so it's costing us more within our budget for, for, for general to stand our ground on valuations, basically.
And my question, yeah, so there is no way to cover that, you know? No matter.
There is not.
Way this good. It doesn't matter how this goes, okay?
The only difference would be that if the valuation stays higher, then the taxes would stay higher.
The tax, yeah.
But if it, if they won, and then they forced Tolly to drop the value. It, it'll cut it tremendously.
Right, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, so on this one, then this will come out of your twenty-twenty-five budget.
Mm-hmm.
It will absorb your twenty-five hundred line item plus an additional thousand from somewhere else in your budget.
Mm-hmm.
And then for twenty-twenty-six, we still have twenty-five hundred in there. We need to have what I heard is thirty-five to forty thousand.
Well, that's.
I mean.
Worst case scenario.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm worried about.
Because.
Atchison probably doesn't need that.
In worst case, if, if it's revolving, not used, it would offset you from the next.
I would say at least a few of these. Like a few of the thirty-five hundred line.
Yeah.
Like. Because it's, it's, because it's commercial too. So, I mean, residential's not as expensive as commercial, okay? Appraisals are.
Yeah, and is that normal to fee for the county, like for the county? It seems high. And I'm like, are there any other options, or this, this is just the one that if you're going to do it, you want to make sure someone?
To, uh, surrounding counties, and this is the company that they all pretty much utilize for commercial, and they said they are the best of the best.
Okay.
Is multi-family counted in their commercial or residential shopping?
All right. So I would look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our appraiser, um, to Keller Craig and Associates for a fee appraisal on one eighteen South Second. Um, in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars to Keller Craig and Associates. This will come out of the twenty-twenty-five appraiser's budget.
So move.
So.
Moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Three to zero.
Thank you. All right.
All right. All right. So next is the deed tax statement discussion, um, and past due penalty. So we put this on here two weeks ago, um, because we had received concerns. Um, and I know some of the folks are here today, so thank you for joining us. Um, last week, we, well, the treasurer had got everybody's heads together and, and formulated, you know, how we're going to correct these things. Uh, the clerk's office, um, has caught up the backlog. Um, and then the commissioners had authorized last week Resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen fifty-three. Um, and the treasurer had found, um, an alteration to the taxpayer information sheet that spilled out, so that's been corrected. Um, so basically the gist is people can pay their taxes, um, in full and get the penalties and interest waived, if not already assessed. And then if they had already been paid, then they, there's a process through BODA to, um, to go through to get that refunded. Are there any questions or any other, please?
To request.
To request refund.
From BODA, yeah.
If they've been paid.
If they've been. It's out of our hands.
Yep.
It's out of the treasurer's hands to approve those refunds.
The ones that have been paid.
Yeah.
But if they haven't been paid.
At this free time.
Yeah, and if they haven't been paid, then you'll accept payment in full of the taxes without the interest in.
With this form.
Yep, with this form, which is available at your county. Okay. Anything else you girls want to add, or?
So.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so, yeah. If you want to just introduce yourself, because I know you were concerned and had reached out to us. Um, and so we all communicated and, and made sure you knew this was on the agenda today.
Okay. I'm Marcia Hansiger. I am a Realtor here in town, um, with Colonial Realty. I am the one who apparently stirred this pot, so that's why I'm here. But it's been going on for quite a while. I understand that things have gotten better, and I appreciate that. Um, the forms that you're talking about, how will individuals know, the past sellers know that that form is available? Is that gonna be? That they're, they're getting a notice, they're late, they're delinquent, and you're telling me that they can come in and request a refund, but not guarantee to re- receive it? Because what we run into is that they, they panic, they come and pay, then we, then they look at us and say, "Help me get my money back." Well, if it's a loan company, that's hard to do. If it's, I mean, it's just, it's a mess, quite frankly. And so the form you're talking about is up for individuals. I'm.
The refund part would be through BODA. So we would, our office, you don't have it. No, we don't administer that part, because they just need to reach out to BODA.
And what is BODA?
Board of Tax Appeals.
The state, yes.
Stat- statutorily, the treasurer cannot issue those refunds.
Right.
It's like, she was good, it's hundred percent out of her hands.
So is there a solution to this issue before it gets to this point? Because we're still, we're still backsliding, it sounds like to me, because we close on a house, it goes to the register of deeds. She does her job and registers it. It goes to the appraiser's office. They do their job and put it, because I can check and see that it's changed hands. Somewhere between, and I'm sorry, important thing.
That's okay.
Somewhere between the county clerk and the treasurer's office.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen. So then they get delinquent notices, they freak out and pay it.
I can try to speak to that.
Okay, please do.
So, um, so everybody knows there was an issue last year where deeds did not get processed correctly. Previous people, nobody that's currently there in the office was involved with that, but, um, we have one hundred percent caught up. Everything is, everything is processed. We are now processing whatever comes in daily. So there is a time between October and January, and I just emailed you about this yesterday, that, um, we can't touch the deeds to process them because that information comes from the appraiser, it's certified, and then we certify to the treasurer, the clerk's offices. And we don't do changes because that, it's the possibility of a value getting changed, or we're just, we're locked out because it would mess everything up. However, there is a way that we can go in, then after that, from January, keep track of all of those properties that sold in that time period. This year's is a bigger mess because of the deeds not being processed. It's normally not like this. This year's is a bigger mess because of the deeds not being processed. It's normally not like this. It's normally just the, the deeds between October and January that are an issue.
January one, or January thirty-first, or?
January one is when we get back, let back in.
Okay.
Start processing again. So between October one and January one, we don't make any changes. We've learned how we can go back in and edit, so then to complicate matters more. When the clerk sends information over to the treasurer, now it's gonna be the, for the twenty twenty-five taxes. Then we start working in January in twenty twenty-six.
Right.
So we go in and do these edits, it's only editing twenty twenty-six. We have figured out a way that we can make the system go back and also edit twenty twenty-five. And so I just reached out to the treasurer yesterday, she was out on vacation, and she was back. Welcome back, hey, we didn't meet. Um, and. We need to figure out now how she wants us to communicate, how, when, what circumstances, so on and so forth, or to communicate, hey, we've had an address change. The tax statement was sent out to the old owner for these, and then how do we, how do we go from there with getting notification to the new owner? I will add, statutorily, it is not considered a clerk error for those, those months. And.
Right.
And it, the onus is somewhat on the people who buy and sell to pay attention when they close. Well, I mean, I'm one of those that had a closing in that time period, and I actually had to call my realtor. I pulled out my paperwork, I looked at it, but I also called my realtor and said, hey, just wanna make sure, because we got the bill. Pretty sure it's not mine, but I wanna make sure. And she went and looked it up and said, no, it is not yours to pay, don't go pay it, get rid of it. And I remembered them telling me at closing, like, you might still get a statement, just disregard it.
And, and we have that conversation.
Yeah.
And the title companies.
Yes.
Have that conversation.
Yes.
And here's what.
And you do.
Do.
Uh-huh, I know, I know.
And then they come in and ask, say, yes, why, they didn't tell me that?
Taxes, yeah.
I know you didn't pay, you're just credited.
You got credited and you didn't, yes, and so.
Lots of conversation that nobody listens to.
It is.
And I understand it's, it becomes all of our problems.
Yes. But.
Yes, and I, I think we wanna do, we're.
We're gonna be taking this extra step, so that it will update in the, the previous year, because I think a lot of the confusion was coming from, people would come in. Go over to the treasurer's office, be like, I, this came to me, it's not mine, and the treasurer would send them over to the clerk, and the clerk, we would open up and go, it's updated. I can tell you it's updated, the next tax statement's gonna come out to the correct person. Well, I think this is gonna help, because we'll be able to print. An actual current with the, with the new property. On it. So, we're probably something that should have been happening all along. It's probably something that should have been happening all along, and I just don't think we even knew that the ability was there to do this, so.
I made, I made a lot of trips into your office prior to this. That's in the past.
Well, this is my first time meeting you in person, so it's nice to meet you.
Absolutely.
Um, and then, and like I said, Connie and I will figure out how, and the commission, like. You guys will need to decide, do you want to then mail another statement with, with the current property owner? Like how, what do you wanna do? I don't, I don't think it's required. But.
Best effort is required. Like if we get a statement back and we know, then we do send it back out.
Yeah.
To that person, or to that address, or, you know, we really do try to stay on top of them, and we noted in the system that it came back and.
So we have a bit of a record.
Yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
But going forward. This will be even better and clearer and cleaner, so.
So what we're closing in September is not the birth of October.
Well, so then it just depends on how quickly, like title company.
The situation I was dealt dealing with.
Mine was a September one.
That, that's when it got ugly on my end.
Yeah, mine was a September one, it didn't make it through the system in time, because it does have to go from there to there to here to there. And so it, it, depending on how quickly it flows through, everybody works as fast as they can, they really do. It's a good team of people. Um. But, yeah, I, I feel you, because I was a September one that. Didn't, didn't work out. So.
Okay.
Any, any other?
Not feeling warm and fuzzy about it, but okay.
I mean, I think that, um.
I don't think I can do anything about it.
I think, uh, I.
Repeat.
I really think that this, ex, this new extra step, I think it's gonna change things. I could be wrong, but all we can do is try and see, and it, if, it, it's. Not gonna be for lack of effort, that if things don't get better, it's not gonna be because people aren't trying. Trying to make it better and trying to.
And I see that, I, I do agree, but.
Yeah. And this, this, this is not just Ashiston, everybody has this issue between October and January. I mean, I've called around to, like, what are you doing? How are you? And, oh, yeah, we have the same thing, we have the same thing. Onus is on the property owner to, to know, to, to pay attention, to get the information, to, um. But I've been on that side, and I know how that felt, and, and I, I was even actually new to, new to town, so I didn't even, I, you know, had no clue. And, um. I, I think that if we can update that past tax statement and then get that out to the right person, it will help. It's not gonna, it's not gonna happen before the deadline, right? The December deadline. But it can at least help with maybe the second. And the title company, like, they're having issues where the title companies aren't paying on time, right?
Well, yeah.
There was one the other day that they brought it, they, I looked at the statement and it wasn't paid until, the first half wasn't paid until May.
I think that's the one that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seemed to just be like a perfect story.
It was, yeah.
Like, everything that can go wrong with that one did.
So the first half wasn't paid until May, and the, and the people had to pay a, a late fee. Because the title company didn't pay it on time, they didn't pay it till May.
Or whoever, the.
It was the mortgage company.
Oh, yeah. Loan company, okay, yeah.
Let me verify it, not the title company.
Sorry, sorry, that's what I said.
Because then you're gonna get a call from the title company that closed that.
No, no, I meant loan company, with the loan company.
And, and the majority of the title companies. They do.
They are.
Very good job.
Yes.
They are pro.
Fabulous communication.
Yes, loan, loan, the loan, the mortgage.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they're a huge. They don't, they don't.
They don't care.
Yeah, right, they're not good to write around, they don't. So, and we have no control over that.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
And also, I think from the commissioner's standpoint, it's very important that we have really great communication with our elected officials to know, because. We're learning the questions we need to ask to make sure we know we're on top of things, and we're not backlogged, you know, so far, and, and different things. Because that poses a problem for the cycle, every other, every other leader in the organization, when somebody's behind like that, so.
Not only that, but it reflects on all of our offices as well.
Yeah.
It does, and he knows that the problem, where the problem was, because it's not the public's job to know our processes here.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Before. Yeah.
So.
It looks like Blair wasn't doing her job, or I wasn't doing my job, or, you know, so.
I'm, when it wasn't either one of them.
No.
And we can understand your frustration, because when we did sit down and have the meeting, like we talked about, like, this isn't the first year this is. We have these conversations every year, and people are frustrated, and when you give your frustrations, expect it to be fixed the next year, and it's not, like.
Right.
And so we understand the kind of doom and gloom view of like, huh, you know? Thank you, but I'm not quite sure. So then now hopefully these processes we're learning to put in place, um, and just an incredible team. That's communicating with one another, um, that will see that switch, and then won't have, you know, this again.
To be clear, during those.
Months.
That time period. They should be really diligent, the owners and sellers on information, and I don't. If it would, you know, be good at closing to have an extra post-it note or something to send with them of. You will not owe, or you have already paid your portion, or, you know.
It goes in an envelope, and they carry it home and throw it in the drawer, and I'll look at it again.
I know.
I assure you, but that's what's happening.
Yeah, but it's like, we can't, we can't control or influence in that time period. If we could, we would, hundred percent we would, but we just can't. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing what you do.
Note to people, don't buy between. Sell or buy.
We won't say that. I have Christmas for just three.
Nothing that happened.
The great. Thanks for all your responses. I did send that email to everyone, and, and you did respond, and I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, and they can't multiple respond. Like, only one of you said, right?
No, we can individually, it's not, we can't CC each other, like, we can't all be on.
Oh, you responded to her.
Individually, yeah. Well, so, thank. Okay. Everybody, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Um, okay, next was courthouse parking. Um, so last week, we took a, a road trip tour of some properties that are. For sale, um, in like a new development, and when we were parking, we realized that we had a lot of staff parking again, um, around the courthouse. And so just wanted to have that discussion of how to handle that, if we wanna send another department head email reminder to say, please do not park. Um, because we want our constituents to have the availability for out front parking, parking along here. Um, so. We put it on here, because we didn't discuss it last week, because we were out of the meeting, so we wanted to remember to talk about it, if we just, we've. Uh, historically, we've sent out emails, and then, um, some have listened and some have not, so. Um, I think maybe just sending out another reminder and kind of watching it. Oh, that was the thing of, um, a discussion of, we can ask, um. The police department to police those timeframes, um. So just maybe letting them know, like, hey, we're gonna be mindful of these timeframes, so if you work here, eight, you know, all day long, please don't park there. Um, because they're.
Can we, can we discuss that a little smidgen?
Yeah.
Okay, because. Do we, is that parking on that side of the building, is it? Re- required to be two-hour parking, is it needed? Because there's so much public parking on the north side of the building. And once school is in session, and if there's something going on at the courthouse, and it. Parking becomes a bit of a struggle over there. So I'm just wondering if, if. If that's needed for public parking, then we should definitely have it as two-hour, you know, only, but if it's not, then maybe it's parking that would be, could be for employees.
You're talking about these spaces?
Mm-hmm.
Just for reference.
Yeah.
When I parked, I counted. Probably five empty spots up here at the parking lot.
But school's not in session right now. People will park up there during school, people.
That's the county lot.
If there's. They shouldn't be.
They do.
Well. So then we need to do better.
And also, well, isn't, I'm saying, school isn't in session, so people, there's more parking on the street, so county people aren't needing to park up there. But once school is in session, parking on the street gets. Really limited, and so then that lot will fill up, because people, there, there's no parking on that. I don't know, I'm just, just talking out loud, um.
But, yeah, no.
Oh, it's it, and then our lot back here fills up with the middle school.
Yeah.
So we just need to be better at making sure we're utilizing order or, or watching it.
Well, they have a pretty big lot.
They do.
But they. They all park along the street, and the back lot.
Yeah, when, when I understand the back lot is. The half facing the school is supposed to be for the school, the half facing us, so that gives us like five spots, and then I think, I counted about like twenty-five. Reasonably, like. Up the street, down the street, across the street, and in the. The county lot and back here, we have about twenty-five spots. Um.
We didn't want to find that people, you know?
Yeah, so. So to your point about out here, so the only feedback that I've gotten out here was, we do have constituents parking out there, and they specifically, when we had the east doors locked. They had to go clear around, and so, um, I think they tried to find the closest spot, um. And out front fills up pretty quick, especially when the hallway has ten deep at your office. I don't know if you guys have feedback.
Tuesdays with the jury trial, like, we, you know, like I would tell my staff, there's a jury trial tomorrow, which means you better get here at seven thirty if you want a parking spot.
Yeah.
Or, you know, seven forty-five.
Yeah.
Or say, yeah, Thursday with juvenile court.
So I just, like, right now is not a good time to make an assessment, I guess. Uh, I'm just talking about parking specifically for people at the courthouse, if. On what spaces are available, because school isn't in session, and right now people are able to park in spots where those, those won't be available when school starts.
Um, just as thought, can we, can we designate the parking lots? And then once they're filled, then come over, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because if, if you're using that as a first.
Mm-hmm.
Choice.
Mm-hmm.
That would be good, but if it's, if you don't have a choice, and that's open.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I like that.
I don't know.
You know, Keith usually likes us to leave a spot or two over there.
Open front of them on that side of the street.
Okay, so maybe just right now, just an email reminder to please, and then we can do further assessment. And, yeah, and then next month or so.
Kind of look at it, yeah.
Okay, so I'll send out a reminder email, and then we can put it on the, like, kind of the agenda maybe in September, does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay. To kind of revisit, is that good with you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so next we have Corey Scott EMS Director, um, he is here, we've added the EMS report for June that he submitted to commissioners. As well as his budget discussion, so. People, that up. Um, do you want me to just do it like I usually do when you're not here, just?
Oh, as in terms of the report?
Yeah.
If you'd like to.
Okay, so, um, the June twenty twenty-five, Ashiston County EMS monthly commission report is, we had a hundred and forty-seven nine-one-one responses, fifty-three transfers, five standbys. Um, and then he summarizes times, uh, everything's documented, um. And shows where. Um, so that data that you collect is very helpful and appreciated, so with that, I would look for a motion to approve. Uh, and file the EMS report for June.
So.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three and two. All right, you're up, we're coming.
And I try off the agenda for just a second, without being okay with the chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna introduce people back here. Um, this is half a C shift, and then also Courtney Keegan, our office manager, and also EMT. Um, they chose to came up, to come up today in case the May nineteenth situation arose again during public comments. And so they are here to show that these are real people staffing our ambulances, and are really here. Unfortunately, the other half of C shift had obligations today and couldn't be here, but they all wanted to be here just to represent the organization and show. Yeah, there's real people staffing real ambulances in this county every day, so.
You guys mind coming up here, so you're on like a video, because back there you're not?
So we have Alex Castile here first, he's an EMT on C shift, Marley McManus, also an EMT on C shift. Uh, Nicole Liggett, uh, paramedic on C shift right now as the acting captain, and then again Courtney Keegan, the EMT and office manager, so. Have to introduce them, I'm very proud of them for taking the initiative, come up and, uh, represent the organization, so. Thank you for letting me shy away from the agenda.
Yes, and here for you coming, you guys. It's not easy, and we know the numbers and all the call volumes and everything, so we just appreciate the job you guys do every, every day around the clock, so.
Yeah, sure, thank you, thank you for being here. I'd just like to say, and I. I think Corey's got wind of this, maybe he's passed it on to you, but the, the, uh, assessment, Amberwell Assessment Survey, you guys were. In the green, and the numbers were good, so the, the, the majority of the citizens of this community. Think highly of the EMS, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And they're the people.
You guys.
They do it, they carry the load, and that's, that's just one, one half of one shift. That does include our volunteer staff, our part-time staff, and the other two shifts, so.
All right, bear with me one second, I gotta find your budget.
Okay.
worksheet, so I can follow along.
So, I received an email from Mark. Asking if, uh, there was any room in the personnel budget, and also the request to cut the UTV ranger, so I think that was where the discussion was heading.
Yes. And one thing just to be mindful of um during the discussion is if this gets into any um positions, that's fine. Um, but if the we do get information throughout our budget process with um employees' names and none of that will be talked about today during this open meeting. That would have to be an executive session, so just quick reminder on that, so. Um, all right. You got it?
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, cool. I was just making sure you had it in front of you. Okay. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. There you go.
Let me find what we, the direction we gave uh Mark to come back to you. So one second, let me pull that up. Okay, I found it. Um, so the direction, okay, your budget request to us was two million four thirty and two dollars. Um, and then we've been having budget workshops and going through each individual department and like kind of trying to refresh our memory. And with yours, um during the discussion, it was determined that the commissioners would like to see if you have any wiggle room for personal services line item. Um, asking what you could do with that and then also removing the UTV budget that was seventeen thousand. Um, and then is there any ambulance capital outlet EMS? Oh, and then the funds. So the auditor was here and gave us a list of, well, Mark had given us a list and then the auditor kind of recapped. Hey, you guys have a lot of funds in Atchison County. And so we kind of identified each one of what department it could or couldn't be used for. We're just kind of uh following along.
We do have, still have the one two nine fund. Uh, we can utilize that, that's what it's there for, but we don't want to deplete it enough either in case there is an unexpected expense. Diesel engine and an ambulance is a twenty thousand dollar repair. So we don't, don't want to completely just eliminate that one two nine fund. Uh, in terms of the personnel fund, I have a lot of concerns in reducing that number at all. Uh, we just run more and more calls. Uh, you just approved the June uh EMS report. Did we notice there's fifty three transfers in that report? That's a significant amount more than we've traditionally run. Uh, the call volume goes up. Just for reference, last year we went from two thousand seven hundred and eleven calls. We're on pace to break that record. Once again, we're sixteen calls ahead of where we were at this time last year as of the twenty eighth of July. All the increase in calls puts more workload on the people behind me. More calls could occur over shift change, more transfers means more time out of the county. So, and we run just razor thin, if not under or excuse me, over budget every year on personnel. We never catch up because call volume keeps going up and up and up. So I'm very hesitant. I really would like to add one more person. That would be a tremendous help, especially during the day to be able to not guarantee a fourth ambulance staffed, but have a higher percentage of time that a fourth ambulance is staffed. And for twenty twenty seven, I'd really like to add one more person per shift to split this workload up a little bit more and maybe we could handle more of Amberwell's transfers, so. Ultimately, the three of you tell me what I get. And I understand if that cut happens, but I'm very hesitant uh as the as Ms. Quinn said, wiggle us, we're always behind because we just run more and more and more calls. That may plateau someday, that might be a spike and come back down. I don't know where that lands. But the first full year of operation, when the county took this over in twenty seventeen, we ran eighteen hundred and fifty calls. Last year we ran two thousand and seven hundred and eleven calls. I'm I'm very hesitant. I mean, ultimately I will, whatever budget you set for us will do. But at a certain point, where are we going to have to cut services and say? And the only place we can really cut services, we have to run the nine one calls. We are obligated to run the nine one calls. The only place we can cut services is transfers. And that's a double edged sword because it's going to cut revenue as well. So the revenue we bring in would also be cut. So yes, we can decrease the amount of overtime and salary we pay because we won't be running as many calls, but you know, the revenue goes down too. So that's something we have to consider.
Yeah, I think, I think we just have to ask that question. That's all, that that's. We have filled that. We've asked the question and that's, that's basically, at least that's my opinion. Uh, so we've, we've we cross that off the list of asks and I I would just like to say this too, is that we know due to protocol change that that in itself increases your call. So you see, you know, that particular segment though itself is critical and it it has increased your.
And Amberwell's seeing more patients too. This, this is, this doesn't happen in a vacuum. They're ju- they're flat busier too. This is not their fault. They're coping and compensating and we're trying to, trying to work with them.
But I'm just trying to make the point that 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 was the right thing to do, right? And it it opened you guys up to more. More calls, more transfers. So that is all good. But we have to recognize up here is the folks that are uh, you know, working on the budget, that that in itself, that very good uh decision that they've made to change that protocol has increased your.
Yeah, it it is. It's going to put us back into being able to do more of their.
So that's a good thing. It's all good. So we just, you know.
Even the twenty thousand in capital improvement for the EMS side is specifically to make the facility more efficient because our fourth out ambulance goes out more. Right now, our fourth out ambulance is tucked in the back of the building with no dedicated garage door. So even that request is so that truck is more efficient to get out in a hurry. We want to build another garage door. So so everything I'm asking for is just increasing call volume. Uh, the UTV would be wonderful. But we can probably get by. I don't want to cut it. Our our current UTV, it's uh very old and we do use them. So, but that's where I'm at with it. I I don't want to sound like I'm not trying to work with the commission, but this is the, this is where I'm at. I mean, it's just, this is not even the same job it was in twenty seventeen. It's not even the same ballgame anymore.
Twenty seventeen was the date you gave for the eighteen fifty.
Yeah, twenty seventeen was, but not patients, responses. Not every response turns into a patient, you know, standbys, false calls, refusals. We run all, all manner of things, standbys, so eighteen hundred and fifty responses.
The uh, the only other thing, and not that I'm advocating it, but just for public awareness when they learn budget is to, you'd have to lower your standards, basically, and have what they call a throw and go, which is basically.
A basic life support unit. Right now we're staffing, the only time we're staffing a basic life support unit is in those times I call them. You mentioned the accident on Ricks Road. And I I want to commend my crew on that one, both rescue and EMS, that was handled. I couldn't be prouder of those crews. But referring to that specific accident, we did staff a BLS truck that night, basic life support truck. Because both the ambulances that were on duty in Atchison ended up transporting patients out of the county for a trauma center. So we called staff back in and two EMTs came back in and staffed an ambulance, then myself and another EMT staffed a fourth ambulance to backfill that. So those are the times when we will utilize a basic life supporting. It's our standard structure, our standard staffing day in and day out. There is an advanced life support person on each ambulance, but yeah, that that would, you'd be cutting scope of practice.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's not even on my radar, but I I've heard that before, it's like, well, you know, they've got, you know, people waiting around, you know, and then uh you know, it's, 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 couldn't we have a cheaper version or you know that? And it's like, well, you, you're gonna get that. Do you want that if, if it's you?
You get what you pay for.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, and so I just, I just want to bring that up to where, where we've looked at these different scenarios and it's, I was there one of the commissioners that when we took this over, so.
Yeah, and then that puts us back with the Amberwell situation. A lot of their transfers require an advanced life support person on that ambulance. If we're staffing an ambulance running around the county with basic life support, they won't be able to handle as many of those transfers. So it puts us back in that position again.
If I could interrupt and also add that Amberwell had came and actually advocated for the existing staff and potential new hire staff as well, um pointing out the EMS personnel as well as the citizens that came to the board and advocated for existing staff and and new staff.
And I just have another final comment, but um you always give kudos to your staff and I think um it goes without saying that as a commissioner, um, as a department head, your leadership um is incredible. You're willing, your communication, your willingness to explain the issues that we we can't sometimes wrap our brains around because we're not doing it every day. We don't have boots on the ground, but you do such a phenomenal job in building relationships with our local hospital. Um, the leadership has nothing but positives. Um, just like Mr. Campbell said with the green of the public survey, I mean. Well, you're on the agenda and you're defending the budget that we ask questions. So um there, yeah, they're, they're all cheering for you in the background. And so I just want to say thank you for your leadership for it because you're, it's it's very um appreciated.
I did want to give the board a couple pieces of information again. The May ninth conversation we had at the last meeting, I know some um media outlets had requested some information. So just so the board has it. That is the regulations from the Kansas Board of EMS on how ambulances must be staffed. We exceed that staffing day in and day out. And just in case it, the names are redacted, but that is our May schedule showing the number of ambulances that were staffed on the nineteenth. So that information is ever requested or or you need that information.
First one, can you send that?
Yeah, I can send it to you in email.
I was just gonna say, we can scan it and get it up. Yeah, we'll do that.
You're welcome.
Thank you guys very much. Okay, next we have Mark Seltner, um Finance Director, Analysis of Road and Bridge Facility Funding Options.
Okay, so I was asked to kind of do a little dive into if it would be worthwhile to invest the money set aside for the um Road and Bridge Facility into a savings account to draw more interest using the interest to help make a payment for the Road and Bridge Facility as opposed to just spending all of our cash. So I tried to do that the best I could, like a cash versus financing situation. If we put so we have one million two hundred and sixty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars in the fund right now. The board has already allocated a remainder of forty one thousand three oh four to BG Consultants. Of course, you could re alter that allocation to be paid out of somewhere else, but given that to fulfill the contract, that would reduce our balance to one million two hundred and twenty eight thousand six fifty eight. So if we were to put that full amount of one million two twenty eight six fifty eight into a high interest checking account, savings account, CD, whatever the case is at four percent which is a little high because currently we're getting three point seven eight. So just for sake of argument that's about fifty thousand annually. So for the next ten years, it's five hundred thousand. If we don't touch it, so based on these options, that's not exactly what would happen because we would be using the funds to make the payment. So each year, the balance would drop little by little. So the amount of interest you gain on the little by little drop is less than fifty thousand. Anyway, if you were to just fund wha- the cash that we have now for the facility, no taxes, not, no other money. Um, if the interest rates hold at four percent, we would have to do a nine year loan because we'd be out of the money in nine years. If the interest rate goes to three percent, you'd be out of money in eight years without using any other money with only the one point two two eight. And so how I got to those numbers is you have your lump sum that you put in, you calculate the interest minus your payment. So every year, the balance goes down, your interest goes down. Um, so, but you're making your payment with a little bit of the interest too. So um it's about nine years at four percent, eight years at three. This could this last option, this third option is just something that I spitballed, just in case you wanted to know for your peace of mind. If you wanted to finance the facility with more than the available cash, say two million dollars, maybe there's something else you wanted to add on. It's not a viable option because you'd be out of money in five years. So you, you would not be able to fund it unless you put more money towards it, ad liborum tax, sales tax, something.
Okay, I've got a question.
Sure.
Um, on your second scenario and you were talking about uh you were talking about the interest, the incoming interest at four percent. But isn't there what are we paying in interest if you finance? I mean.
So I think the cost of the loan is about three hundred and thirty six thousand. That's how much interest you would pay. But you're gaining five hundred thousand in interest if you didn't touch it. So it seems to me that's what I was kind of getting to, but it seems to me that it's a wash whether you do if you just funded it with cash outright or if you financed it. Because by the time you put your money in, it gets your interest, but then you're making payments and then you gain interest and you make payments. You're probably about four hundred thousand or less in interest you actually will accrue. So the cost of the the loan in interest, if you funded it for the entire length of time is about the same as the interest you would gain on the money. So the only, the only thing that I see that could be beneficial to financing it right now is if you were worried about having another capital project that would come up, that you would still have cash there. If you needed to dip into it in an emergency, but if you don't foresee that, then I I don't think that it varies one way or the other, which way you go.
I I guess I have a problem with that if, because to me, even though it's already spent to me. I mean, if you've already made and it's just committed to that, that fund is, that's where it's going. Even though you're using it as a payment, the, the, the bucket that it's coming out of for a payment, I mean, I because then it it gets to be too tempting to, oh, well, we've got this here, but go ahead and spend. Well, then you've already overextended yourself on what that money, you're allotting it twice, I guess.
And currently, what are our obligations outside of the forty one thousand three oh four? Nothing?
Forty one thou- no, no.
So we don't owe BG anymore?
I think we have one with Swammy, one of the uh grading mark of of fifteen.
Okay, I don't.
And I'll have to I'll have to look that up.
Some thousand dollar range as far as outlay, does that, does that sound right to you? This this plus what you're talking about puts us in that, in that vicinity, I believe.
About one point two then is available. Um, but so this is just my fifteen thousand foot overview. I think if this is something you wanted to see about doing a loan or a bond for it, then I think we would get our bond counsel in and have them give their expert analysis and just back up my numbers pretty much, but um looking at it, it just doesn't seem that you're really going to save or benefit anything.
So you said we're already three point
Seven eight currently, which is actually higher than the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. They're only at three point seven six, which is very similar, but um though our current local bank is beating their rates. I don't know what more you want to do with that, but.
Explains it pretty clear.
I was hoping for a I was hoping for a different outcome, but um. Just the interest. Seems to outweigh. The the other interests.
Thank you. Okay, next is unfinished business, um. The Memorial Hall Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding, did we finish those up?
I haven't done anything with them since we had that last discussion, I kind of thought we were. Or less, I don't know, impasse is the right word, but the. We didn't have. I I didn't have. Clear understanding of any changes that were going to be made.
So we just need to get signatures on the lease agreement you prepared for us?
But I I also didn't wasn't. Wasn't picking up that there was buy-in from. Other parties involved.
Cause we we notated what they wanted. As far as the wording goes, I guess. It was like it was removing the three percent. Interest and.
Right.
Um, hold on, I have those notes.
Yeah, the increase. I think we made those.
The few thirteenth is the last, see.
But that's so bad. Modification, I.
Okay, so we made modification, so we consented on to. Is that when they were here and we went through what they wanted?
No, I I it's an email from you want to involve. With their. It's about lease agreement.
Yes, and then they came after that and we've. We've walked, we went through. I think Travis was on our schedule. Um because then you and I had met with Nick and then Travis came right after that. And we reiterated what needed done and Travis was like, well, if everybody's good, like, let's do it and. I was just following up.
June seventeenth.
So I was just going after it.
Says Travis the law.
Yeah, and and then um. After that meet, like, everybody was good because then Memorial Hall had sent that list of. What Brian's budgeting for with design mechanical and all things, so. The urban lawn care and. Um so yeah, I think. Was probably ready to get those back in front of them, the.
Hang on, I'm thinking of it, when are we meeting for the Multicity?
August sixth, I believe. Let me double check. August sixth at five P M. Here in the Commissioner.
Oh, here, okay.
Cause it's just the folks from Ashes and County Memorial.
We have about a ten-minute executive session on the Memorial Hall. To talk about. The burn client.
Okay. They discussed.
How long?
Did you say ten? Okay. Ten minutes attorney-client with everybody in the room, so. Just so on the seventeenth, you all discussed with Travis, but you didn't come to any agreement on. Like, nothing was passed, nothing was like. I know it was more of the conversation, uh you just had a conversation, you didn't, yeah, there was no consensus to anything. So I don't know, when did you come to? Well, we basically told them what we learned from Nick. And the Memorial Hall is gonna have a lease agreement with the trustees and we're gonna have a lease agreement with the trustees.
Yeah, and it says we discussed, we discussed changes.
Yep.
Contract and the changes.
Yep, and so we need to make the changes and then get it back to them for. Okay, so I can sure I didn't miss, oh, I guess I got the call here, so attorney-client, ten minutes with everybody in.
I'll move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at eleven twenty-seven. A M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship as allowed by. K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B two, and that's the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion. And that the board come out of executive session in ten minutes in the Commissioner Room of the Courthouse Basement. And those present will be the three Commissioners, County Clerk, Finance Director, and County Council.
Second, the movement is second and all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.
This is kind of small, but those were my notes from Nick was. In a branch.
Yeah, for sure.
At the end, yeah.
Okay, um, the only other unfinished business is. Um the R and R survey questions that we need to work on, um we do have a an executive session. Um with the Finance Director and the Commissioners, um and I believe that was for one hour. Um non-elected personnel subject of budgeted wages.
You think that's too much time?
No.
We're gonna do that now.
I mean, cause we're going through the entire organization wages, but.
Move the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session, uh. Eleven forty-one A M to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by. K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine B one, and that's the purpose of the closed sessions to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And the board come out of executive session in one hour in the committer- commission room of the Courthouse Basement, those present will be. Uh three Commissioners and Finance Director.
Hey, I'll second, it's I moved in second, then all those in favor say aye, aye. Excuse me, sorry, passes three to zero.
If there's gonna be anything after.
No.
Maybe two. No, I'll hold at that, I I can't.
I know, there's a lot.
Watch what I email, so.
Okay, well, we're back. Back in open session.
Since you're in here.
It is. We need to extend our previous um. Executive session, same parameters for an hour.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, well, second, it's moved in second and all those in favor say aye, aye, passes three to zero.
Better get something. I think we're getting somewhere.
Yeah. Okay, I think we should review it for another hour.
Okay.
Because. That's about, we've been through about two-thirds and that would get us about another third. Okay, so um yeah. We need a motion to extend our current, our previous. Executive session, same parameters.
To do that.
Sorry, moved in second and all those in favor say aye, all aye, passes. We just agree.
We're getting closer to time.
Yep. So, okay, we're. Back in the open meeting, so then we should probably outline. Who? We need her. So clerk and A F R.
Yes.
Together.
Yes. Um are you wanting to? Uh just meet with. The appraiser to discuss what you. Are thinking or just. Me explain to her what you're thinking.
Uh either way, I'll go, we can go either way.
Yeah.
I don't care.
Yeah, we can do her.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Um and then the county attorney.
Uh huh, and I T.
Okay. Yep. Um I think I'll just request those then.
Okay.
With the best time slot that I think.
Yeah, I had it pulled up what we have next week. So we have you doing a budget overview.
That'll be on the regular session.
Okay.
Just to discuss where we're at with balances and how much um sales taxes came in for July. Just it it'll be brief, probably ten minutes, I don't know what I have down in there.
My name's on here, but. I don't think I requested anything, I'm gonna go ahead and. Commissioners for a legislative policy request. Which. You need to kind of think through that. Oh, do we want? Do we need the treasurer for next week with that whole group of? Different ones? Or not?
Well. Yeah, I don't think so, we're we're. Where did we fall? On the. On funding that. Those increases, that that did we hold off on that?
Yes.
The treasury, okay, I I that's. I I thought we did.
Yeah.
For another month, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm thinking now that. Who was taking care of the vehicle for the parade? And what vehicle are we driving?
Um, no one responded to me other than Susan. Um so I think it's just us four, okay?
Okay, so do we wanna just take?
The traverse.
The traverse.
The U T V.
Well, it rocks can get in there, is there?
We should take a sheriff's.
Motorcycle escort.
You can request that.
We are supporting the Sheriff's Department by driving one of their vehicles.
Bulletproof.
Or we could drive an ambulance. That, no, that's to haul us off, we might start in the sheriff's vehicle, we might end.
Hey, you 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 were making light of this, but like, that really is something I was wondering, we should probably ask them to be present at our hearing.
Yes, oh, sure, sure.
Are we supposed to decorate a car or do you just drive?
We just drive. And and in the past, we've asked like Lewis to supply us with a vehicle, but I don't know why, we've got a.
We could use the traverse, right?
Just use that and then because somebody had to pick it up, take it back and. There's, I was always afraid of liability, also, do we want those magnetic signs? Or and where are they at, cause I don't think.
Think they're back here, but they might need to be looked at, that could be too fragile or not stick.
Okay, also, some vehicles are aluminum, if they've got aluminum siding, it will stick, it's a magnetized. When we used Bill Paul's pickup one year, he's got a, there's poor pickup, it wouldn't stick to, so we had to.
Oh, do you think we need those? I'm just wondering, cause when we submit the thing, they announce who's in the V, like.
Yeah, but I they only only right there next to the thing here, I think it'd be all right to have a sign, even if it's.
What does the sign say?
The Ashes County Commissioners.
Okay, fooling clerk.
They're probably way in the back, Eric, by the shelf.
I'll make a poster.
Okay, real quick. Memorial Hall.
They don't have. Too bad.
No.
And they are on the side of the metal filing cabinet or magnetic?
Okay, I'll check to see if they stick.
So he just noted, like, he wanted to make sure because the appropriation request is now zero. Because we're doing the lease agreement, that. He wanted to make sure that we were aware that the. There needs to be a budget for Memorial. So, did we put that under the facilities and main?
Well, there's just that.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna.
Maintenance line item that was.
Okay, so I just wanna reiterate and just, I'll I'll respond to him and say that it's been done through maintenance department. Um and then followed up with any other traction on needing it over if that's still on the table. So. That's a question for you guys.
Do you wanna go over appropriations, you asked us for a week.
That's.
Homework.
Yeah, um I was planning to do that today, but if you guys don't wanna be here. Longer than you can, you do it a different way.
I just, since I thought of that, just wanna make sure that you didn't need that.
Yeah, no, no.
And on the twenty-sixth, we're planning on having our meeting here regularly and then coming back at six. For the. Or our hearing. Is that correct?
I have a regular meeting.
Mark, for next week, it's you and Joe. For the post-meeting.
Yes. I mean, there could be after Joe's finished, I I could probably use some time with them after he leaves.
So you wanna do Joe, I put Mark. Okay, registered Dean is riding with us too. Awesome. Don't we need to add her to that form? And then submit it. That's great, awesome.
So now there's five of us, oh, the the traverse has.
The the meeting we're having here with the. How K D H E is August the sixth at five P M seven.
The Health Department?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so. I also forgot to ask about deeding it over, is that still on the table, just wanna see. Where we're at.
About what?
Deeding it over. The Memorial Hall to the Ashes.
I I don't think so, I mean, I I don't think, uh yeah, when I read that. Even if we. We're obligated to up, keep it up whether we own it or not. So you would almost lose control of it. One of Pat's notes on that, what he gave us there.
Where are you, you lost me for a minute.
Sorry, I'm all over.
Make sure that, or you got an email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, we removed the budget from the appropriations because we're budgeting it within our maintenance. And then wanted to ask if deeding was still on the table.
Okay.
I think we. I felt like we nixed that.
Okay, let's see what else. Oh, we gotta figure out what we want care radio to be.
Um we were, I thought we were gonna, well. We were gonna touch on. Survey, is what, were we gonna give any updates on the lake? I thought maybe some updates on the lake and then. Care radio, I don't know. We could. Yeah, because the honor hearing will be. Between now and the. Well. Yeah, it'll be between now and the next. Radio. Spot, right?
Yeah.
That's the, aren't our meeting will happen between now and the next video spot, so. We're gonna say anything about. Uh, possible. Sales tax. Are we gonna hit on survey questions? I don't know. Those have to be. When do those have to be?
By the twenty-second, right? I'm in the nineteen. Sorry, I go with my last.
Survey will be live on the twentieth.
Twentieth, so.
So we have to have them.
Yeah.
Some fish. Well. Um.
She might have. Nineteenth. Or is that too late? Do we need to have a well before that?
Probably well before that, because I'll need to have time to put them in the system.
So like a week and four?
Yeah.
Twelve, maybe?
Would be good for my timeline.
Yeah.
Speaking of timelines, because this is about like. Um. Can we walk through kind of, because we're running out of time.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. So, uh, because budget and survey questions need to be top priority at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Because we have three meetings left, right?
Yep.
That twelfth, nineteen?
Yep.
Only three meetings left.
Yeah, but, and then the, the twenty-six, also we have that for me.
Yeah, I don't think I could have my document. If, if there was any changes on the twenty-six, I don't think I could have them updated prior to.
I meant for the general.
Okay.
Yeah, not, yeah. I would wait till the last data.
We have two weeks.
Yeah, the nineteenth would be the last day for me to implement any changes. The last commission meeting.
Because then you could come the twenty-sixth and see them and like.
Right. Make sure we're on good.
Yeah.
Talking points and.
So we need to, so you're gonna be, um. As you have been communicating with the department heads. Um.
Yeah.
We need to give them deadlines, like we, we have to. You know, like, we have to make decisions next week.
Right.
So.
Would, would there be any? Entertaining a special? Commission meeting, a different day of the week?
Yeah.
Just for budget?
I would be okay with that.
Or I was even thinking of, cause I know. Things are.
A year.
Even if we, we don't have anything pass the fifth, like we just shut down and say. Hey, we're gonna have.
No other business.
Yeah, I need purchase orders in, we'll give the first hour for any needs of purchase orders or public communication and then.
Then you have a full.
We shut down and we work with you. I mean, because.
That too.
We have to, and, and maybe we do that next week. Um.
You could do it both fifth and twelve.
But next week could be those final questions or whatever we need with these departments. And then the twelfth is us like wrapping it all together, putting a bow on it and saying, this is where we're gonna be until our.
And then if we need, we could still do another, like the rest into that week, fourteenth or fifteenth, do a special meeting if we have to have.
Right, yeah.
I just feel like we gotta dedicate, like, especially after today, like I, you don't anticipate it, but when you start, mine, you know.
You have.
Takes time.
It always, when you drill down, you drill up to new stuff. I mean, and new questions, it's like.
And that'll give you this week to get all those.
Yeah, I think in those emails, I'm just gonna have to say we're gonna.
Five Tuesday.
Yeah. If you don't have it, then. Changes will just be made.
Would it be too pushy to ask for it by Friday at five? That way we'd have the weekend to absorb it before our meetings or?
Well, even on Monday.
Yeah, Monday would be good too. I mean, just like a homework, not just like Tuesday.
Well, but the one we're meeting with though.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Yeah, we can't really do much.
Can't ask them to do.
That's true.
But some of those metrics, I guess, for like. You know, how, how many tickets do you have here? You know, if we could have the metrics maybe by Friday, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, but if you, but if you got the word out this week, it's even. Until. Yeah. Usually. Maybe nine.
Would you guys have time to read Pat's draft and then we can give him? Feedback? And just get that checked off and then.
Wish I would have asked you guys clarification on one thing.
Do we need? I mean, we're here. Do you need to pop back in? I'm serious, like.
Five minutes maybe? There's just, there's one thing that.
And I gave you a hard copy of that statute, so I'm gonna file that, cause I was on the way to Cruz's football game when he requested that, and I said, I'll send it when I get home, and I forgot. But I gave it to him this morning, so just so you know, I'm gonna file that away.
So you say we already need to go in?
I think so.
No, for non-elected. Or.
Yeah. I don't wanna do it and then you'd be upset and I don't wanna not do it and you'd be upset.
Five sufficient?
I do believe so.
Say five?
Mm-hmm, five minutes.
I'll move the board of county commissioners recessed an executive session at three oh one. PM to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine being one. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. The board came out of executive session in five minutes in the commission room in the courthouse basement. Most present will be three commissioners and finance director.
To confirm is this subject of which is?
Yes.
I'll second, it's been moved in section, if all of us favors say aye.
Aye. Pass the three to the room.
Pass the three to zero. Okay, we're back in open session. All right, so let's just figure out what we're doing next week.
So we do still need to figure out how you guys wanna handle. The people that overlap.
Okay.
With the. What, what you want done? Or there's like fifty people.
I.
Um. Brandy went through those reports. Of twenty, the twenty twenty-three and the twenty twenty-four names of. Uh. That potentially were caught up in the. Situation with the deeds, that, when they weren't processed.
And they're highlighted or?
And the ones that are highlighted are ones that are also on the list, this list here. Which? Is the. I think the pub. A list we printed from C I C that would be on the publication. Does that make sense?
Well, so what do you need us to do? Look at the publication?
Well, I just, we just need direction on how you want. What, what do you want handled, like? I, cause what I heard from Pat earlier, all the names are gonna go in no matter what.
But if they come up and pay. They'll drop off, right?
I think it's August first, or I don't know what the, I don't know what the date is, I shouldn't say that date.
Yeah.
Sure what the date is.
I mean, there's a lot of these people that we would know.
It's three times in August, so it, it gets published.
It gets published three times in August, yes.
I mean, there's.
And this is.
We need to contact those people, I feel like, and tell them to pay before August, right? If they would pay. This week, would they? Get removed?
I would think so. I don't know, that's what I, I kinda wanted to talk about earlier, cause I've not been through the process before, I don't know. Did I print that list correctly? I, I, I had on my own, went through C I C and. Thought I found like what would be the. The list, but. Um.
So we know they were affected by the. Twenty twenty-fourths.
So. Yes, she went through the list of, we have the list of all non-paid and went through and reconciled it, Brandy did, with the list of. All the names of deeds that didn't get processed when they should have.
Yeah.
And it's about fifty.
So it, so then we would just need the treasurer to verify that the highlighted ones haven't been paid and reach out to him and ask him to pay? Because. I mean, several of these I know would. Like. Yeah.
Do we have contact info?
Well, so on that highlighted list, there's a deceased and this is it. So, yeah, I mean, I, I would know how to get ahold of the majority of these people and definitely would, if you want me to help.
Like, so what, yeah, what?
Yeah, like many of them. So if these people pay by when they would.
Thursday.
By Thursday, they would stay out of publication. And do you go based on the publication list or by this? Which I know there's overlap, cause like I said on there, there's a highlighted deceased and the person that is. Ownership is on there.
Typically, we just go with what the system generates, but we've had conversations about. Doing things differently.
Okay.
Since we had. Issues, of course.
Well, you just, I mean.
Yeah, how do you, how do you, what, what's the easiest way to go about that?
We had, we contacted, if we don't have, we don't have numbers.
It's this.
Well, so if you give, if you give a list. To go off of, like if you say this is the list or that's the list, like we can go through. And. Like collectively and say, okay. Here's mine, I'm gonna go contact these people this evening and. And then they can come up to the treasurer's office, ask what they owe, pay in full. Like if they don't get it, like if they don't get their statement.
And that's a week old, so like it may be different now, people may come up and pay. So, we would need to run a, a fresh one, but it was. You all had asked for numbers of what? We thought.
Yep.
Because some people have come up and already paid. And so of the people that who hadn't paid and who. Were caught up in that. And. It's, I think it's about fifty. Crashing in the paper. Allows those people to find out also if they, if they are aware of it.
Like it's not a, it's not a shaming thing, it's a, it's a.
Right.
Another avenue to.
Yeah.
Cause like, information.
Like I told you guys, when I sold, um. Our, we had two parcels and when we sold it in twenty twelve. One of the parcels didn't get switched in the clerk's office. And so the new owner, so our name got published in the paper. Because it wasn't switched, and so the new owner wasn't even aware that he owed taxes, because it was still. The deed was in his name, but. Just like all these others. So that was what drew us. To even knowing about it was seeing it in the paper.
Which I, I think in a normal circumstance, that would be okay, but like now that we know, like, there's people on here that have called and said. I sold this. Last year and. And got it, like these are part of the delinquent ones, so if we know them and we can help by just reaching out and say, hey, go pay this by Thursday. So we can avoid having your name in the paper, because people do get mortified and like. Some of these are. Um, I know, like for instance, I can, like Mount St. Scholastic Incorporated, like I'm pretty sure, you know, that's something that's. You know, if they need to. It's just a correction, like.
Right.
So. Is there an easier? Report you in around showing these, or should we just roll off of this and if? They've paid, they've paid.
I guess in a phone. The, this one is.
Previous and present owner.
This, this is not, that's the publication one, is the one that. I ran, you wrote down. And so it's just a. Right one? It probably is.
So the, but these aren't the current owners.
That's you.
Like that has the current owners, this is.
This is previous owners, cause I know I've seen late, late banks.
Yeah, there's, these are previous, like this gentleman. Um, so. We need to go off that.
The highlighted, yes. Like, these are the people to contact, these are the current, the, the new owners, this is gonna show them.
Like here, so for instance, this one.
Previous and present. And that one was so with. Wayne has been paid, so that one is irrelevant at this point.
Okay, but that one, or I just saw his name there, and it's like.
That is one that was an issue, but now it's paid, so. It won't be.
I think what we need to do is with those fifty. Since it's just fifty, is get a spreadsheet with just those.
Yeah.
And then who the previous, who the current is and, and I think that would be easier, we can, we can, we should be able to do that today.
Okay.
And, um, I can get up there in time and then, um. Divvy them out. That's great. Because I think that. It's Tuesday, so if we have it today, then that would give them time to make arrangements to feed her by Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
If they, and at least they know, right? If they can't make it Thursday, they're gonna be in the paper, but we tried to. Remedy the situation.
And I do. Like, I try to make that ad as short as possible, so. There is no good way out of C I C, so I actually have to take it. I have to export it as an Excel doc, and then I have to put it in a text doc, and then I have to put it into a Word doc, cause that's how the newspaper needs it. So there's quite a process with it, so there is some time. That I'm working on it.
Just sort of need some money?
Hmm?
Yes.
All my I sent over as. And I uploaded those image. For the publication list, they need them because they manipulate them. Is there? They're not a display ad there, though.
Yeah. Did you know any of the people on there? Did you know any of the people on there?
I recognized them.
I, I didn't go through the bankers.
Okay, we can rerun that list too today, cause I think there have been a lot.
Okay.
And then we could just.
And we'll just.
Check that to the highlighted ones on here and then. Well, and even shorter, and then, and then even leave it in Excel, and then. I just, I don't use that, I use an export. And so I exported to Excel and then we can sort it any way we want to.
Yeah.
So then we can self-sort it alphabetically or by parcel number and compare this to lists a little bit easier. Without. There being a lot more.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay. Did we want to?
So.
The agenda.
Yeah, next week, we talked about having the one hour from like ten to eleven for any regular business. After that. Would be solely budget. But there, we talked about having some executive sessions next week. Do we wanna do that?
Yeah.
After the eleven o'clock time slot? And then whenever that's finished, then do budget stuff?
That sounds good. Okay, so eleven A M and let's plug him and read him and I'll put him in their requesters commissioners department.
I have a clerk in H R.
Clerk and H R, oops, okay. I'm going to, um, is it okay to take that legislative policy request out? And we can put that down.
Down next week, the following week?
I don't know what the due date was, but. Um. Jay Hall sent that, does every county have to, I have to submit?
I don't think we ever have.
Well, I know, okay. Know we have to have like a voting member at the.
There you see.
Yeah. But. Okay, we'll just take that up right now. All right, sorry, I'm, and how long should each one of these be?
So they're probably different. Um, that one, they at least half an hour.
Okay.
Right?
Got it. Next.
Um. Appraiser. Fifteen?
Okay.
I T fifteen? Well. Depending on what you wanna discuss, maybe.
Longer?
Maybe longer.
Okay. Half hour?
Sure.
Got it.
Um. And then county. Attorney.
Half hour?
Yeah. And I'll try to send an email to all of these folks, so with their timeline. And, or just try to tell them. The time to be here, and if that will work, county attorney is the one that. Sometimes has court on Tuesday, so that one might be a little bit fish. But I T appraiser, clerk and H R, they're good at being.
Do we need treasure or no?
Do we need treasurer or no?
I don't know.
Um, I just said county attorney.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, did we need the counselor to back up with that one or? Or how is that gonna go?
I don't know.
Guess that could be a later date.
Are you gonna reach out to county attorney about me too to see?
I will.
And then base everybody off of her.
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's good.
I don't know about that one. Cause I would lean to. Your guys' discussion.
Well, we need both for that to work, right?
Yeah, I think so.
That's that question.
Sorry, I, which one?
We need, we need both, right? We need separate meetings with both.
Uh, yeah, I think we need the attorney first and then we.
Good.
Yeah. So that gets us to twelve fifteen, um, with thirty minutes, like twelve forty-five, we would be into budget workshop.
And we would probably need to cover.
What's after ten fifteen?
Well, when were we gonna have?
Well, we are given the first hours for any departments that need a P O or.
Wouldn't Joe, wouldn't they workshop?
Joe was running the workshops.
Oh, we need to schedule that then and give him a time.
Yes.
So twelve forty-five to one forty-five?
Sure.
Yeah. We need to get that in there.
Okay, so the requester, Joe Snyder. Department.
Good call.
So take him off from down below with the post meeting workshop.
But will you keep me?
I kept you.
And so then we will adjourn at, or we will. Then do budget workshop with you beginning at one forty-five.
Um, and let me talk about appropriations.
I did my homework.
Thank you. And then some of these other topics will come up.
When's that, you said appropriations coming up next?
Next week, yeah.
Was gonna say. I dog ate my homework.
It's okay.
Twenty-five, you have twenty minutes for a budget overview. You're just going over fun?
Yeah, let's just.
Do away with it or do you need to do?
I think let's, it was to provide you a list of all of the funds and the balances and to discuss the. How much sales tax came in, like to recap.
We should start doing that once a month.
That will be good, because then you can give us a recap of what the, oh, everybody said that the funds could be used for that we asked. Can you do that?
Reply to me, yes.
We'll just ask him to reply by before next week, cause we are gonna go over it. I like that.
So.
I'm gonna put you at ten. For twenty minutes.
Be still twenty minutes then.
And then that allows you to have forty minute wiggle room if anybody pops in, does that sound okay?
Um, who do we want to designate to tell department heads? You only got forty minutes, so. Get your request in.
Oh, I'll, I'll send it.
Okay, or we'll see you following week.
And you're gonna submit the Atchison County Fair with adding register of deeds, right?
Yep, I got it right here.
Awesome. Okay. And then do we wanna go ahead and, and pencil off the twelfth for a budget workshop? Before we get things added? Or do we wanna see how we get for next week? I just.
Yeah.
After today, I feel like we're gonna need it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mark. What do you think?
Yeah.
Starting at eleven?
Sounds good.
And then commissioners, budget workshop with you the rest of the day.
Yeah. When were you gonna kinda get your survey questions taken care of?
Shoot.
That's on your unfinished list for today.
I'm not timing the day, man.
Well.
How about? How about I create a rough draft? With scenarios utilizing questions we already looked at and liked before. Does that sound okay? And then, at least we'd have a starting point and you guys can go, I hate it, like we're not doing that or. Or building from it, like I just feel like starting from scratch at this moment is a lot.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I would go from what we've talked about.
And just add the scenarios of for the, for the taxpayer to read this and understand what they're reading, they have to have a little brief summary. And so we'll kind of brief summary it.
And then we can tweak and, yeah, it's easier to critique it or to. Then to make it up out of whole cloth.
And on, when we're building the survey online. I can pretty much. Make anything happen that you guys want to, if it's multiple choice, if it's fill in the blank, if it's pick something from a drop down list, if it's. Write in your own answer, I can, whatever, however you have it done is we can make it work. Or we can build it together and I can show it to you ahead of time and put it up there and watch it or however.
Okay, so. Mister Campbell, how do you feel about the carry recording this time?
No, I'm okay with it, as long as we come up with a. Direction, cause there's, there's actually a couple, you know.
Alright, what were the options?
Well, make updates would be an easy one to me, I mean, you could. Uh, but or, or go the other direction, which is. We're in budget season, so is it gonna have something to do with? What we're doing, what we're preparing to do, the, the possible sales tags, I don't know. I don't know.
You're mailing out your R and R notices. When, um, they are supposed to go out. They are shooting for August eighth. Might end up being August eleventh, because I, um. Have, I wanted to run this by you today, so I have to send them the P P F yet, cause they needed to know. The time of submission, if you guys wanted to do the E notice. So.
So will people, you think have them before the?
Before the twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome. I didn't know what the turnaround time that printer is.
Oh, no, 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 that's when they're mailing them out. I'm sending them out over to them. Today or tomorrow.
Okay, great, so they'll hit the mailboxes in the eleventh, so maybe. I don't know, just a thought of a heads up or not a heads up, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, with that, I guess we could throw that in there, but my sell on the lake thing, so, so here's a spin. I, I did the initial. One on the lake, remember the sale?
Oh, yeah.
So maybe revisit that and say, okay. Happy to say that, you know. This didn't happen, the sale didn't happen and we. We have a committee now and just go through the details of, of what we've got going on and hit on some of the things that, that, uh. Ian. That's not, last meeting, when does this have to be in it, cause I can. I can go in, I can do it myself, take it in. And I can send you, I'll, I'll just send you some kind of a rough draft on the direction that I'm going, but, but.
I don't know when they're always open, cause the last time I went, I went directly from here and it's closed, I couldn't go in.
Right, right.
So I had.
They need it by. Thursday, I guess I could, I mean.
Always get, yeah.
I've got tomorrow and. Thursday to do it, so. But if we, if we decide.
Thursday at noon.
Okay. Well, that gives me plenty of time to sit down and. Go through what Ian. His last report and some of his ideas. Actually, I should call him, say, hey, you wanna do this together?
There you go.
Well. I could, he'd probably do it, he had time. Yeah.
You don't want to look at that?
No, we all got them.
Oh, you did?
Um, okay.
Just let me.
You got it.
Yeah.
Right on. Um, Memorial Hall lease agreement, is there anything we wanted tweaked in that?
I didn't see anything.
Um, this is just, is this the agreement or is this just the trustee?
Trustees to the recreation.
Because like this doesn't, I didn't see anything in your. Our fee, you know, the, the. Should that not be in there? There's, there's no actual like dollar, dollars or anything like that, so.
Well, it's, they're gonna be reimbursed, so much of the insurance premium or. For that quarter and. I don't think it wanted a dollar figure, cause that could change from.
And it will change, that's what I was gonna ask you, how are you gonna set a rate? For twenty-six, but then in twenty-seven, it will be different.
Well, so I think that's why the language, although instead of budgetary appropriation, just subject to annual. Expenses, I mean.
I mean, and we get the invoice, so it's like we can provide the documentation of.
That's all they would want.
I see what you, I see where you went with this, yeah.
It's just leaving it open for.
Got you.
Recreation Commission shall be. Trash and security monitoring, this includes payment of Martin trash. Eric shall maintain a good standing for the. Also ensure regular cleaning of its offices and gymnasium areas. Well, and the other thing we were gonna add was the refinishing of the floor due to roller skating. Recreation shall pay the utility expenses from directly to those service providers. This includes, but it's not limited to. See, we weren't doing that, the trustees were doing that. Because they weren't gonna add additional duties for them.
What, what number are you on?
Three.
Oh.
So is this Pat asking? Whether they want monthly quality or? Number four.
Which to me, it doesn't matter, we pay it annually upfront and then.
So whatever's easiest.
And we get the bill the first day of the year and we pay it.
So should it be at, that Atchison County will pay all utility expenses?
Um, that's fine, we would just need.
Or the trustees will pay them.
I mean. So that's how it is set up now, but they employ. The rec commission staff to do it. Because they're the ones there at the facility getting the bills and everything. Um, we won't be at the facility getting the bills.
Which I guess maybe, this being the lease agreement between the trustees and recreation, the recreation would just. Kind of alleviate their fear it wouldn't get done by just doing it.
Right. Yeah, I guess so.
I don't know. Recreation shall maintain liability insurance for its operations and activities conducted, but I thought. Does number eight sound right?
Which they do now. For any, um.
But they're paying for insurance, part of their lease, right?
Yeah, but that's just the property. The building coverage, we don't, we would not charge them the liability insurance. Like they.
Where does it say the property coverage is?
Uh, the first sentence of eight shall maintain property coverage for Memorial Hall through its risk management pool.
Atchison County.
Uh huh.
We maintain risk, but aren't they reimbursing?
They're reimbursing us for property coverage.
Subject to any budgetary.
But they've always been on their own for liability.
Right. I just didn't read it as they reimburse us.
Oh. Okay, so if that's the case, then number four needs to be altered. For its county's property and scratch liability.
Yeah.
Because they're not reimbursing us for that.
Yeah.
We pay, how it is right now is we pay liability of a hole, not broken out per facility, per. Department, it's one lump liability. There would be no way that I'd be able to break that out.
Yeah, and it just contradict of down below where they provide.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's scratched.
Can you make those amendments and? Or do you want us to make those amendments?
Hey, yeah, it'd probably be better for me.
Let me just print it out and then we can all look at it, make them and then sign it and we can give it to him.
But. County provided maintenance. Is our maintenance department fully owned more with? Knowing and does his budget reflect? Any increases to Memorial Hall?
I went through a list of. Maintenance. That Memorial Hall pays for now and added up the costs yearly and quarterly, all those. And it's. Roughly five thousand, give or take. Um, there is a line item in the maintenance budget for twenty thousand dollars that. Doesn't, I don't believe it has a use. So I think the theory is to use that twenty thousand for Memorial Hall, but also talking to Brian. To see if. There needs to be more in it. Or. It. That twenty thousand's adequate to do mowing and to do all of the, everything else down there, the ice removal.
Yeah, we didn't get to maintenance today on.
We did not.
List, so.
No.
But I just, as I was looking at that, that's something that wanna make sure that we're not. Plugging more responsibility in there without a chance for reviewing whether we're gonna be.
I have it on my list to, to visit with him, think about it.
Again, you're on it.
Try.
Okay, so the only so far adjustment was number four, take and use the liability out.
Correct.
And we're good with that verbiage. Payment shall be made by the Recreation Commission in quarterly installments. That he put due honor before March thirty-first, June third or September, like.
Yeah, um, I think quarterly would be good, because as a taxing. Leaving entity, you are dependent upon the distributions, so the distributions happen quarterly.
Okay.
Um, so that would be good for their cash flow, probably. Trying to keep mindful of that. So I think where it says monthly, quarterly, annually, question mark, just quarterly, yeah.
Okay. Um, he has down there highlighted, uh. Quarterly installments to on.
Does it say? Who to make it out to, who to give it to? What to do with it? Anywhere?
Name it shall be made. By the Recreation to, made payable.
Yeah, and it would just be made payable to Atchison County.
Okay.
And I don't know if you wanna just deliverable to. The clerk's office, the, or main, the county commission.
So in the back where it has like the Recreation Commission and then. The trustees, I'll just put Atchison County and then the clerk's like.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, you're okay with that. And then you can just put it in my box and I'll receive it in and.
Okay, so Atchison County care of finance director.
Sure.
Four twenty-three. Or six. Atchison County shall be responsible for structural maintenance of Memorial Hall and for certain contracted services previously overseen by the trustees. These services include. Pest control, boiler maintenance. And chemical treatments, snow and ice removal, including weekends and early mornings to ensure building access, lawn treatment. And chemical treatments, snow and ice removal, including weekends and early mornings to ensure building access, lawn treatment and irrigation system servicing.
And all of those that you just read are on that list of. Expenses that Paula had sent?
Hmm. So.
I don't know if we have a written schedule, though.
Yeah, I feel like this is a little excessive, like, Atchison County will be responsible for structural maintenance and certain. Contracted services.
Yeah, I don't know what they do now.
Well, because a written schedule identifying vendors of service intervals, like, we, we, um. Do RFPs for lawn and different things, like. I think this needs to be more. So we don't have to redo this, right, or submit a. I don't know. I don't know. Thinking. Any additional maintenance needs or service requests shall be coordinated through the county maintenance department or another designated official. So we should put in here, any. Additional maintenance needs should be submitted a ticket, just like everybody else, right?
Hmm, and they can have that, that link.
Yeah.
Brian can provide that link to them. It's using, it's internet based, so.
I feel like we could, I mean, she sent us those, but I feel like we could. Dumb this down a lot, like, Atchison County will be responsible for structural maintenance. And any other needs, like.
Um. Could you just say? Something about regulatory maintenance that's already been done.
With county facilities.
Oh. I. What, what's the, what's the? Issue with the winter at night, I'm. I feel like I understand it, reading it, so I'm not sure what. Hmm. Needs to change.
Okay, so just put the I T, or the county maintenance ticketing info.
Mm-hmm.
Shall be sent. What's the, do you guys know that? What that is? The ticketing system for maintenance, I know I T's, what's maintenance, maintenance at Atco?
Now. Like a whole.
Talking about the help thing?
Yeah, like a little. Way you can put a ticket in.
It makes it at A T C O K at Atco.
That's what I'm wondering.
Okay. Oh, an email. Not.
You send an email and then it. You shoot it there and it puts it in the system.
See, I had to choose a portal. Put it that way.
Oh, this is good, yeah, this is how I do I T is I T at Atco, K is not order.
So maintenance is the same way, and then it, it flashes back and goes, we received your ticket.
Okay. Um, at least leaving the verbiage on number six.
Yep.
It would allow maintenance staff to know exactly.
What's budget.
What they're supposed to be doing, maybe.
I like it. Recreation shall be responsible for housekeeping, trash and security. This includes payment for Martin trash service and simply.
I don't.
I.
I think you should take out the specific.
Because if they ever changed.
Which is possible.
Simple safe security and monitoring.
I think just the payment, this includes payment for trash service and security monitoring, I think. Taking out the brand.
Yeah.
The Recreation Commission shall also ensure regular cleaning of its office and gymnasium areas and shall promptly report any. Maintenance concerns to the county.
I think that's kind of already covered.
Yeah.
And number six, any additional maintenance needs or service requests.
And shall, um. Be responsible for refinishing the gym floor.
We've been letting it continue to.
Do you need to add something on there about when appropriate, when needed, when?
Mm-hmm.
There's no designated timeframe to do that.
Didn't they budget it annually, fifteen hundred bucks? I thought they did.
Correct.
I think so.
Okay, insurance sounded okay.
Mm-hmm.
No structural alterations, modifications. Oh. That was one thing, all improvements made with consent shall become the property of trustees unless otherwise. Agreed in writing, so I guess they could agree in writing before they would do it, cause they were concerned about, like, the golf simulator, like, that should be the recreations, cause they invested in that.
Hmm.
The Recreation Commission shall comply with blah, 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 all right. Does everything else sound good, guys? Oh, that was one thing. Well, we'll just see what they. Say. The rent-free basis they were. But. Anything else we wanna change on this, based on?
My person.
Can I give this to you to scan and send to us and patent? Thank you so much.
Oh, there's a back page, sorry. Yeah. Okay, what else? Anything else we gotta cut or repeat for today, so?
I'm not sure.
All my emails in here are budget. And survey.
I'm arguing with this too.
Yes, please.
Can I ask a question about this E notice?
August twentieth is the legislative.
Did you guys approve the? This. One-third sheet going in, it's listed on here, but it's listed as optional, so I wanted to.
I never saw that.
It was. So it's a one-third sheet that goes in. It's one and a half cent. Their. Their thing is that it increases by three hundred percent. The people who sign up, and I guess maybe people see that more than they see the little blurb on. On the sheet catches attention more, so. Up to you guys. So doing the numbers, it would cost, you know, between a hundred fifty, a hundred and sixty dollars to. Send that out with the flyers. And if you, say you got two percent of people to sign up, if you got, you know, three times that. You go from. From mailing the next, the next mailer for eight hundred fifty dollars and fifty cents. To ninety-seven sixty-five, plus the. Hundred. Fifty, sixty.
Yeah, I like it.
That saves like. Potentially like six hundred bucks. If you have more people sign up. Up to you guys.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I liked, I thought we proved that. Well.
Well, I, I was clarifying, because it's listed on here as optional, and so I didn't know if you.
That's true, that's a one.
This is the thing you guys signed, you did, I have to sign one upstairs, but. This is listed on here as optional, so I just wanted to confirm that. You wanted to do. This optional. Form.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. And then everybody was good with this, we found one typo, a period instead of a comma, but everybody proved it and is. Perfect, all right. Sending it today.
Thanks.
Check, check.
All right, well, if there's. Nothing else, then, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, so.
Move to second, and all those in favor say aye, all ayes, passes. Three is zero.